This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the regular July 17, 2023 council meeting order at 7:00 PM. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay, are there any presentations tonight?
Do you want to motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, yeah.
The agenda is written.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Norman, would you call a roll please Stephanie?
Karen Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried, we hear you.
Great.
I'll declare.
Okay, are there any presentations? Okay, and we'll move right into the public hearing. City Council Public Hearing Vacation 23-01. This public hearing is now open at 7:03 PM on July 17, 2023 for consideration of the request to vacate a portion of the unconstructed alley south of the East Bridge Street and north of Lakeview Drive. The order of the hearing, the public hearing will follow in a certain order. It is, staff will present a staff report of the proposal and the criteria for approval. Next testimony will be allowed for those in favor of the proposal, following with testimony in opposition of the proposal, then comments that are neither in favor nor against the application. The staff will then have an opportunity for rebuttal. No new evidence will be allowed during rebuttal. Therefore, it is important that you clearly and concisely state your full testimony at the time you are allowed to speak. Each speaker will step to the dais and clearly state his or her name and mailing address for the record prior to your testimony. No speaker will be interrupted except for questions by city council members. No testimony will be entered into the record if spoken from the position of general audience. Those participating in the hearing will have the opportunity to request a continuance to address any new evidence submitted in favor of the application, or if time does not allow testimony to be completed at this hearing. If no continuance is requested, those participating will have the opportunity to request that the record be kept open for at least seven days to allow for written rebuttal of testimony presented at this hearing. Otherwise, the hearing will be closed and the matter will be returned to the hearing body for deliberation. Ex parte, does any council member have any ex parte contact to declare? Okay. Conflict of interest, does any member of the hearing body have a conflict of interest to declare?
No.
Okay, challenge, does anyone want to challenge a councilor's right to consider this application? Okay, move on to the staff report. The city planner will now submit a report.
Good evening, city council and staff and everybody in the office audience there. I'm Carrie Brennikee, the city planner. This is a request filed VAC 23-01 to request to vacate a portion of an unconstructed alley south of East Bridge Street and north of Lakeview Drive between two tax lots, which you have in your packet. Ms. Brown has made the application. It's zone residential. Notice was provided for both the planning commission hearing, which preceded the city council hearing, and a paper of twice of general circulation, which is a requirement of your zoning code. The initial public hearing was held before the planning commission on June 26. You have exhibits in your packet. I won't go through all of them. I will go through the boring stuff I require to say by law. The applicable Title IX Code criteria for this application is Section 9-01.12 Street Vacations and Section 9-01.10-40 Type 4 Procedures. So basically, I'm not sure if, you're all very familiar with Vernonia, if Stephanie wants to ban a white where the property is. The applicant is applying to vacate and absorb a portion of an unconstructed alley adjacent to their property. The alley has never been improved nor used for traffic purposes and it's currently inaccessible due to improvements to both East Bridge Street and Lakeview Drive. There's curbs on both sides. The applicant is proposing to vacate the full 10 feet of alley right of way and the full length of their property, which is about 100 feet. The purpose of vacation is to release the unbuiltable right of way to the applicant so it can be dedicated to the property for their use. The property owners to the east of the applicant have signed a consent form acknowledging they agree to the vacation and absorption of the property by the applicant. And this vacation will not create a buildable lot. There's a lot of these in Vernonia. I think you might have heard one of these a year ago by Mr. Strickland. Regarding it was, a grid was stuck over a hilly terrain and there's a lot of right of way that doesn't necessarily make sense in Vernonia. There's a long complicated procedure that the applicant has painstakingly gone through to vacate this section of right of way. What they had to do was, there was a map created of permissions and consents they needed to get from adjacent property owners. They needed to get two-thirds of them and the application has gone out and gotten the written permissions from all the property owners up to the two-thirds they need to fulfill this requirement. Those are included in the packet. And then there are other criteria they need to abide by. They've paid all their taxes. They've shown that the vacation will not eliminate access to public infrastructure, such as water or sewer or storm facilities. But they have demonstrated that the elimination of the right of way will not eliminate access to any parcel in the surrounding areas. It's only 100 length piece, so there's no properties between the two right of ways except for the applicant's. The vacation will not inhibit future development of infrastructure. The TSP does not show alley or road right of way going through that area that they're proposing to vacate. And it won't impede any traffic because currently it's not being used and it's not planned to be used as right of way for vehicles. It won't have any negative impacts on wetlands or floodplains because there are none in the area. And there are utilities in the right of way. So that's basically the criteria they needed to demonstrate that is being upheld by the vacation and they have demonstrated it. A similar report has gone to the planning commission and at their June 26 meeting, they held a public hearing and recommended approval of Vacation 23-01 and forwarded on to the city council with their recommendation of approval. Staff recommends that the city council approve the vacation and approve the ordinance, which is officially vacate the property, which is after this staff report. There are a couple of conditions of approval. Most of them are just procedural with the next steps with Columbia County that the applicant would need to follow. And with that, I will take any questions you might have as staff of this application.
Any questions, city planner? I don't see any questions, Corey.
Okay. So now you move on to taking the, what's next on your list, which I believe is taking the testimony.
Okay, we'll move on in the hearing then. Testimony in favor. Testimony will now be heard from those in favor of the application. Each speaker will have five minutes. Please step forward stating your name and mailing address for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hello, I'm Angela Brown and this is my application. I'm at 697 East Bridge Street, Vernonia. And I've lived there for over 25 years. It's just, I'm trying to get it looking more like a yard than just a piece of gravel that goes through. So that's what I'm planning to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here tonight too. Testimony in opposition. Testimony will now be heard for those opposed to this application. Each speaker will have five minutes. Please step forward stating your name and mailing address for the record and proceed with your testimony. Like we have none in opposition, so we'll move on to neutral testimony. Would anyone like to speak? Was it neither in favor or opposed to this application? Please step forward stating your name and mailing address for the record and proceed with your statement. Final call for testimony. Does anyone else wish to submit oral testimony before the applicant has the final opportunity to respond? Applicant rebuttal. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the facts introduced by those opposing the application? Sorry, after or any statements made regarding the proposal? Extend the hearing. Is there a request by any of the participants or the hearing body to continue this hearing to another date or in time to consider new evidence or because of the complexity of this proposal? Okay. Evidently, there's no interest in extending this hearing. So with that being said, I will close this hearing at 7:15 PM. Public hearing closed. Okay. So, to the council body. Are there any questions or discussions before we move forward with ordinance 941? There was a typo on the heading of the ordinance that I want to bring to your attention, but the city of Vernonia? It's fairly minor.
There's one other date correction here to be made after.
Okay.
My only question, Mr. Mayor, is probably towards staff or the applicant. What kind of costs are we looking at when we do one of these vacation?
You mean for the applicant?
Yeah.
I believe the fee for us was $500, but she also has to hire a surveyor and then her time to go around and get all the signatures.
Get all the signatures.
Yeah.
So the application fee plus survey and?
Thousand dollars.
About a thousand.
And time, nobody.
I remember.
Good thing all our neighbors like her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Might have been more difficult if she wasn't so liked.
I remember when that was the roadway and it made a circle.
And the animals ran into my shop trying to use it.
Oh, really?
A long time ago. It took the door off.
Oh, no. Counselor Ash, do you have any questions or discussions?
I do not.
Okay.
Hey, that's the only other comment I'd like to make. I mean, it looked like a good application. I know in the past when we used to do these, it was far less formal and, I mean, I really like our check sheet. We go down through, I mean, because there's a lot of places we probably have alleyways people want to vacate, but because of infrastructure, we wouldn't allow. But it's probably, yeah, it's not something really the city likes to do in a lot of instances, but in this case, it looked like it applies. It really doesn't have another use.
There's no access from either street yet for.
Yeah.
Let's see wishes of the council regarding this application. Yeah, I close the hearing. I mean, if you're, if you have any.
Just make sure we're done with deliberation. Because if so, I would like to move.
Well, yeah, I asked if anyone had any further discussion or questions, so.
In that case, move for adoption of ordinance 941 vacating a platted unbuilt alley.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Webb, would you call a roll please Stephanie?
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
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 Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Would any counselor wish to hear this ordinance ready for? Hearing no such request. This is the first reading of ordinance number 941 by title only in ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating a platted and unbuilt alley south of East Bridge Street and north of Lakeview Drive between tax lots 4N4W04DA01100 This is the first reading ready. If somebody would like to make a second motion, we could, since it was unanimous.
I will make a second motion.
You want me to say the motion for you, Cherise?
Yes, sorry, I'm trying to deal with a digital packet.
So your motion would be to adopt ordinance number 941 and to have it read for the second time by title only?
Yes, I would move to approve ordinance 941 and have it read for the second time by title only. Thank you.
Okay, so moved, is there a second?
A second.
Counselor Norman. You call the roll please Stephanie?
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Karen Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried. Would any counselor like to have this ordinance ready for? This is the second reading of ordinance number 941 in ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating a platted and unbuilt alley south of East Bridge Street and north of Lakeview Drive between tax lots 4N4W04DA01100 and 4N4W04DA01000. This ordinance will be in effect in 30 days.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, moving on to the mayor's report. Citizen of the month. I believe it was Counselor Norman's opportunity to select a citizen in the month of July, so I'll turn it over to Counselor Norman.
Yes, I picked Paula Hansen for citizen of the month. She has served the Lions and done a great job there. You always see her at the Lions booth and drawing people in around town. She has done that and the senior citizen member and the Holly Hoop where they did 150, when they got 150 members, she did the hula loop on Main Street to help entice. She does like to do some window decorating. And then last but least, her best one, I think now, is the Fair Lady for Vernonia for the fair, Columbia County Fair. So I'd like to present her with this certificate. I'll say yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ready, one, two, three, do it again, and one more. There we go. Yes, thank you.
I'd also, like I say, thank you very much. My Fair Lady is coming up and I just found out there's questions. And one of the questions is, what do you like about Vernonia? And it made me cry when I stopped to think about what I like about Vernonia because there's so much. And being a newcomer to a place where your spouse grew up, it's like everybody knows you, but you don't know anybody. And I've just been so welcomed by this community. It feels like it was yesterday I got here and I realize it's 20 years, but I'll be 24. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
I thought this was it, I got to say I'm also in the salmon festival. Salmon Festival, salmon auction. Yeah, I like that. Salmon auction.
Yeah.
Thank you, Paul. And as a fellow Lion member, I could attest to Paula's participation, especially in the last two years. She's brought in more members, new members in our club and she's fantastic.
My pleasure, thank you.
Done a lot of work, salmon festival, jamboree, barbecue, and all kinds of stuff, so. And congratulations on My Fair Lady. That's awesome.
Thank you. Gonna be interesting. But the good news is I did this in front of all of them trying to get on their clothes July party class tonight, so we'll see how it goes.
Richard, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Oh, that's, I wonder if you have a minute for another analogy?
Oh, sure, why not?
So Jason Leila, head of the Parks Committee. I organized, and I organized a Parks Committee, June 24th in Hawkins. He got eight people to come. Sometimes they forgot their rights and we had to borrow from the neighbors or whatever part. But we worked our butts off and we cleaned up the triage that was caused by the sunburn to all the big, we retrieved it two years ago. Brandishism. And a tremendous amount of acid was dumped into the soil and was killing the roadies outside the scout cabin. And so I organized a cleanup and he got people to come and actually worked their butts off and cleaned it up. And he deserves credit for getting volunteers because he pulled off terribly neat shit.
Yeah. Thank you, Richard.
Okay, are there any council committee meeting reports tonight? Go ahead.
Our guests might not want to have to stay here holding their leg up.
You're blinded by accident.
Not at all.
Accident at any time.
Thank you.
But because like I said, I just give one at my house. I have to go home and give two.
Tell you to break a leg on the contest or?
I'm glad they didn't.
Just kneecap?
I'm just good with the kneecap.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, the Public Works Committee meeting, held the meeting on the 27th last month. Some of the things were covered, all up on the dark skies initiative. Michael Calhoun had talked to Forest Growth. They're kind of in the process of implementing a light being standard. And I think the light frequency is three Kelvin is what the target is. So they're integrating over time, I believe, in their program. I think he was going to still follow up. Think he talked to Dawn Rose. He thinks he's going to go back and top the billy later, so.
And is that for any light, outdoor light, even if they're shining down? Do you know?
I would assume that that?
Because our play shed ones that we just switched to are 5,000.
5,000, yeah.
Because we needed the brightness.
Or brightness, and you're inside a building.
Yeah, so that'd be interesting to see there. Does he have a copy of the policy to share? Not there yet.
Yeah, I don't think we've got that yet. So, and then also, fast down the line, this is the storm drain markers. Committee wants permission to go ahead and place. Michael's even got the epoxies to do it for these. And we're just talking about wanting to just kind of do the downtown. Talking with the committee. They weren't talking about doing everywhere the drains. It's more of educational value, of people seeing them and going, okay, I need to.
They just stay cautious and going flat on or on the curb?
We're thinking on top of the curb.
Oh, okay.
So they won't get scraped off by snowplow.
Yeah.
And more visible there. So if the council gives their blessing, they just want to move ahead with that project and they would just do it themselves?
I think you guys already did, didn't you?
Well, I know we talked about it and I couldn't remember that we.
You remember to do it twice.
Yeah.
Did we?
I don't remember if you actually voted or, you know, made a motion that that was approved.
Or do you need a motion?
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
Sure, sure.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we allow the Public Works Committee to place storm drain markers as such here. Metal markers in the downtown area to mark the storm drains for no, you know, there's fish, there's drains to fish presence.
Can you maybe show Cherise? I don't know, she probably can't see, but you could tell her.
Yeah, she'll never see it. Hey, you see that?
Same one like the picture from a while.
Yeah, and yeah, it's the same one.
You just need a ladder.
What'd you say, Cherise?
I said you just need a ladder to get it up to the camera. Don't be.
Oh, yeah.
It just says no dumping in the river and in the middle has a picture of a salmon. They're really well done, I think.
That sounds great.
Yeah. Okay, a motion's been made.
Thank you.
Step, move forward with, have Public Works move forward with these.
Public Works.
Public Works Committee move forward with these designated markers for storm waters. Your second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Norman. Roll please.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Karen Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Oh, another subject that came up, something I wasn't aware of. I think either the city administrator. Cold car sealers. And we're just specifically talking about usually parking lots to get a sealer applied to them. And the cold car sealers mainly use east of the Rocky Mountains. But there's finding out there's some pretty nasty stuff in there. There's stuff in there that, once I watched the video on. There's stuff in there that, once I watched the video on it, it was like, yeah, why would we allow use of stuff like this? Washington state has banned it. Don't know about California. So anyhow, it was awareness that Michael Calhoun brought this forward. Mainly for the city is, what do we use? We looked at our crack filler material. It's an asphalt base. It, it's kind of the dividing line, asphalt base or cold car. And so anyhow, just talking to our vendors, make sure that we don't have any of the products and stuff that we use. I think the committee's thoughts on it, you know, I think Michael had a model ordinance on it, but I, I think, my thinking is, is to get state reps involved and just have the state do a blanket, statute on it, ban on it. Seems like the Rocky Mountains is the dividing line. It's, doesn't, but sounds like we keep, have it here, but again, we want to verify, make sure. And, and I see, I see parking lots, I know Sentry RNFs has had.
Napa.
And Napa just had a ceiling. And, you know, hopefully it's straight products, I'm sure it probably was, but the main thing is it's kind of an awareness issue. It was interesting, Home Depot and Lowe's both had supplied products, and once this came to front, they discontinued those products, removed them, and they actually just brought in a substitute. There was a substitute for it that's just as cost effective and, so there's just really no use, no reason to be using it. So that was.
It's a forever Putin.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't like lessen its effect.
In fact, it was, in the documentary that they had a link to, it was, they were working with DEQ, or not DEQ, EPA, and EPA said to them, you need to go back and retest your tests because these, these levels of this chemical that you're reporting are things we find in toxic dump sites, waste sites. And they go, they're not, the tests are valid. So it's just an awareness thing. The committee was pretty concerned when we do E Street, that we do put back, we're gonna be there for equipment and everything that we, we basically facilitate a trail connection between Louisiana and E Street. It's kind of has one there now, somebody mows that and it's flat, you can walk right down it, but I think the city administrator said they were gonna put gravel back in there, so.
It's already in the, they're gonna be in the plan, but their recommendation will come to you guys at your next meeting.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, they just, they wanted to make sure that that was in there. Guess it really wasn't a committee's thing, but one of the members, he has Terry Schaumberg's the trunk lid off of his old, he used to sponsor a racing car up in Morton, I think they used to race. And it's got his name and I think it's got a.
Cause Vernonia, Oregon.
And Vernonia, Oregon, and maybe a saw blade thing on it. And so he pitched the idea that maybe that should be going down into the shelter with Spencer. And so Josette and I have talked and we think that's a good idea. Hope, probably the rest of council's input on this. Looking like we're gonna have to kind of put it in a wooden frame because it's just skin, nothing behind it, so it might in the wind. So anyhow, we'd like to probably put it on, up in the, was it the dormer on this end of that?
Triangle.
Yeah, the hill there, it looks like, you know, it's in there pretty nice, so. So what are you guys' thoughts on that? Bringing this stuff on you here tonight.
It's been identified as the Schaumberg shelter anyway, so it's not anything, like we're not adding to changing who it's for or anything, but.
Is that something that Parks should hear about first? Before decision.
Well, just ask a guy. Ask the Parks counselor.
Um, I'm, it's a little hard to hear some of this.
So we were given the skin of a race car, so like the trunk lid, right? Terry Schaumberg, which the Schaumberg shelter is named after, it was from his racing sponsorship. And it says Schaumberg, and then it says Vernonia, Oregon, and has some like fir trees on it. And one of the Public Works Committee members had that in their possession and wanted it to go in the shelter. And so if council's willing, Dale and Claude are gonna put a nice wooden kind of cedar rough sawn frame around it and put it up in the shelter, way up in the triangle on the one end, the west end. Do you think that needs to go to Parks was the question?
I'm sure they wouldn't mind hearing about it first. I know.
You, you guys could have approved it if they don't have some big.
Yeah.
Problem with it or something.
Yeah, and the meeting's in two days, so we'll get an answer quick.
Wait till they're, what Parks says.
Or do you guys want to give consent? If you guys are in agreement, if you, you could give consensus for, to move forward if Parks doesn't have an objection or something.
Do that.
Do a motion if you want to actually approve something.
Yes, my head is tilted.
I wasn't looking, I was just looking at you.
Would anyone like to make a tentative or a motion for tentative approval from Parks?
I'll move that we tentatively approve Dale's plan to mount the race car skin pending Parks Committee's approval as well.
So moved, is there a second? Second. Seconded by Councilor Norman. I'll roll, please, Stephanie.
Can we have a discussion, please?
Sure.
So this to me is a no brainer. It, it's a, I'm sure it's a yes, but I just want to make sure we're being thoughtful of the fact that we do have Parks Committee that works hard on things. And generally, we ask them to review stuff, ask them about things, and make sure they haven't had any other brilliant ideas or whatever that they wanted to do. And I'm sure they're gonna be in support of it, but I just want to be mindful of their role that we've tasked them with.
But we, we can get a, I can take that picture and put a border on it so I can get Cherie's an image of what it will, could potentially look like, yeah.
So a motion's been made and seconded. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
I'm gonna abstain because I don't feel it's a good process.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Period.
Thank you. I do have a committee meeting report, senior center. I attended the senior board meeting last Friday at 10:00 AM. We had quite a lengthy meeting because we had some guest speakers. Rachel Organ and Kelly Jarman presented their grant application for their senior exercise equipment and railing going around the senior center, and, and so a lot of discussion, no final movement on it, just informative. They're still kind of working out the details with our staff and over at the senior center, but, so anyway, it was a good meeting, lots of information. They are going to begin opening the thrift shop on Mondays fairly soon coming up. Haven't got a date yet for that, which Monday it'll start opening up. I am personally gonna check on a person that would be interested in staining the deck, restaining the deck and the guardrail. So I'm gonna be doing that here pretty soon.
The cabin in the wood?
For the cabin in the wood, yes. So there were 492 meals delivered last month, so down a little bit, but doing pretty well so far, so that's all I have to report on that. Any other council committee?
I have one.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so we had Parks Committee almost a month ago now at this point, but Josette was able to come out. They had asked for some help understanding the outcome of the budget process versus some things they had heard rumor wise about their budget, and then also with understanding their monthly finance report that they asked staff to provide. So Josette came out and helped with all that, and I think that was really appreciated. They are still working with Columbia County Public Health, and something that's kind of come out of the work they did on cleaning up the tobacco and Parks ordinance was to kind of gauge community interest again in how people are feeling about whether parks should be smoke free completely or not. And so before making decisions on that, they want to try to gauge that. So they are planning to, the county is planning to put together a poll, really short, I think the idea was kind of like three to five questions possibly, and they will be at Jamboree and Salmon Fusk and things like that, just to kind of talk with people and get their opinions on that, to know how people feel. And then the RFPD for the campground was the other thing that has been having trouble progressing, just with how much other stuff is going on. And so one of the members of the committee, Spencer Cole, has offered to help Josette with by trying to kind of prepare a draft of the RFP so that she can just review that instead of having to write the whole thing herself. And so I do actually have a need about that, Josette, that I haven't talked to you since finding out, which is that Spence just would love to have an example of any previous Parks related RFP, just as a starting point. So, yeah, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Okay, any questions for? Are there any topics from the floor tonight?
I have two.
Okay.
The first one is from Scott Laird regarding counselors explaining no votes.
Okay, Scott.
Scott Laird, 1325 Bridge Street. I'm coming to you tonight to just make a request for you to consider. As somebody who reports on what happens here in the council chambers and, and is tasked with informing the community what happens here in the council chambers, I've noticed that we've had quite a few situations where we've had dissenting votes. And I would like to request that maybe when we finish a vote, if there's a dissenting vote, that the mayor would ask the dissenting counselor if they chose or would choose to explain their reasoning. It doesn't always feel like we get all the information necessarily through a discussion. We may have part of a discussion and a counselor may change the way that they sit on a, on a vote. And I just think it would be helpful, at least to ask the counselor, and the counselor had certainly declined to explain it, but I think it would be helpful for, for me in trying to explain to the community what happened, you know? I use very little, I try to keep the explanations that I write in the paper fairly short about what happens and just kind of report on a vote. So, you know, there may be, people may interpret whatever they want to interpret with a lack of information about why someone may have voted against something. And I think it would be helpful for the community to know where the council stands, what, maybe there were the concerns of the council on an issue. It would help me be able to explain what's happening in council and what the, you know, if there's a disagreement or whatever. So I think it's just something for you to consider. And it's been done in the past at times sometimes, and I think it's just, if there's a dissenting vote, it wouldn't hurt for the mayor to say, would the council like to explain why they're voting against this? And I think it would be just helpful for the community to understand a little bit more about the workings of the council and what's going on. Certainly would, might inform them when it comes time for voting, whether a person took a stand for whatever reason, that they might, you know, want to vote for or against that counselor because of a position they took. So I just think it would be helpful and something for you guys to consider doing in the future.
Thank you, Scott. I'll give it some serious consideration.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, my second one and final is Leslie Sebert, sorry, Sebert, regarding fireworks and fire risk.
Hello there. Leslie Sebert, 117846 Knox Road. Scott, don't put me in the paper, I don't need everybody to know. I am here to support supposedly logging family that's coming to talk to you guys about ban on fireworks when we have high fire risk days. Obviously, whoever that is, isn't here. So I thought, I can go ahead and say something about it, since we had red flag fire danger on the 4th of July. I get it, that's terrible timing, you know, what can we do? But I have some concerns, obviously, if we can't, you know, do anything, burn anything, do anything, and we've got illegal fireworks going off all over town. What, I don't know if you guys are the right governing body, who we address this with, but what do we do as a community, one to protect our logging families, because literally generations could be destroyed of income. You know, these families have built their lives around this, and as we all just saw down in banks this weekend, doesn't take much, and we've got a huge problem. Now, I drove through town on the 4th of July and there were so many illegal fireworks going on all over the place, and we don't have the police staffing to do anything about it. So are we gonna hire more staffing, you know? As the city slash taxpayers, do we have any liability if somebody sets everything on fire up here? You know, what, I have concerns about that. So I guess my request would be, what, the request I intended to back up is that we ban fireworks on high fire danger days, which just seems logical. And if the citizens aren't capable of common sense, I guess I'm asking that you guys apply some common sense for them, of not putting us all at risk of burning down our entire community and destroying families whose livelihood depends on the tender. Thanks.
So, set agenda for acceptance, public park committee meeting minutes for April 2023.
I'll move to set agenda for acceptance.
So moved, is there a second? Second, seconded by Councilor Webb. Would you call, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Parks Committee meeting minutes for May 2023.
Consent agenda covers all of them.
Okay. Consent agenda for approval, City Council meeting minutes for June 20th, 2023.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda for approval.
No move, is there a second? Oh, seconded, seconded by Counselor Webb again. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Is there any unfinished business? Okay, new business, donation request, only logging show, on page 82. So does staff want to respond to this initially, or?
Well, in the past, we have participated in community wide things. We did at one point have a gift certificate that was part of the Christmas bucks, if anyone remembers, where we got our stamps for shopping locally. Then they went into like a raffle and you could win different prizes. That's the last time I can remember us participating, other than every once in a while, we would throw in like a city coffee mug to a Vernonia basket for some raffle or something. But that's as much as we've kind of participated in the festivities of what's going on in town. I believe Katrina, not here, I think she means for this year's jamboree, right?
I don't think so. She wants to give it away at this one.
Yeah, she says. Right, but she says next year's jamboree, but I think she means this current, the upcoming jamboree.
She wants it to be donated so that they can raffle it off at this jamboree, and the stay would be valid for the next jamboree.
Oh, it's only for jamboree?
That's what it said.
Okay, so then I misunderstood her.
That's how I understood it.
Okay. But that's what she's.
Mayor.
Yep.
She's got a question.
Okay. Counselor Ash.
Yeah, so I am wondering, even if it turns out that we as a council feel okay with this, I know it's a small ding, but it is obviously money that would come out of Parks revenue for tonight's day during a prime weekend. So I do think if we felt favorable, that it's something I think also we should run by them, in my opinion.
I just disagree a little, because you guys are the authority body, they're a recommending body, so it seems like you're asking them for permission to do something that you very well have the right to do.
That's fair.
I just think, it worries me a little that we get into that pattern where then they believe council has to run everything by them when they're really advisory in that capacity. That's just my two cents.
I can get behind that.
Yeah, I agree. If city administrators require their, I guess the concern I have is, you know, okay, how far does this go? You know, I think one time we talked about having a.
In the budget.
Policy or a budget line item to, for, you know, we determine on an annual basis how charitable we're going to be with the citizens' money. It's the citizens' money.
We had talked about whether or not there were valid things you guys would want to do throughout the year, or participate in, or sponsor fund, other than giving space and time. And that in order to do that, would be most effective to put a line item in the budget with a value attached to it that broke down over time in supporting, maybe it's the four festivals, maybe it's the school does a thing, you know, and the kids need a, something to raffle, and the city participates that way. So then it would be every year coming up with what you wanted to participate in. That seems pretty legit and not a huge amount of money could, I mean, if you had $500, you could participate in multiple things or something.
What are two nights' stay at Anderson worth?
It would be 60.
60.
Yeah.
Counselor.
So I appreciate the sentiment behind this. I think it's important that we do want to keep our out of towners coming in and spending money. My only concern, it's not a concern, but this is being raffled off as part of a, I'm not sure if it's a basket or whatever they're doing, with the intention that it's going to encourage out of towners. But is it as likely that it's going to be an in-town person that gets it? Not that that eliminates them coming, setting up camp and staying in town and hopefully spending money, it's just, I, I, I'm not sure that it, I am afraid that it may not have the consequence that she intends on that.
Well, in that same vein, Counselor Wagner brought up, I mean, it could end up the person gets it and then they advertise it for sale to, hey, this jamboree weekend is a premium weekend, you're full up. I think we have the camp host here tonight.
Well, and that's, that's what makes me nervous about it being for a specific date. It's one thing to raffle off two nights' stay within the next calendar year, but like Jeff can attest, there's people that, it's already reserved for next year, or the minute it can be, it is, right?
I mean, they, they get rid of the specific date, but, you know, a date that may apply.
Right.
That's available, yeah.
Yeah. Or the, I mean, we could always respond to her and say, you've spearheaded kind of an interesting idea, the council in their next budget cycle is going to be putting money aside specifically for this kind of participation in the community, and hit us up at next year or something. You could always.
Is this a date that she called, she booked?
No, she's just asking for them to, to participate in something that would be a prize, basically. Yeah.
So what does the council body wish to do with this request? Yeah, I think we need to think this through further, have a, for the process on this, and kind of set up a policy to how we handle these things. And think about it a little more, because it could be a can of worms. We don't want to support them.
Well, and I think your policy to safeguard you guys would say that, you know, the donations can't go for something that dimes or harms someone else, right? It can't be the anti-club that gets the donation. Or once the funds are expended for an annual session, that's, it's out, you know, kind of, so that everyone feels like they, their festival, their event, their project has a fair shot.
And maybe we solicit, once a year, for those groups to apply to us or something for.
Yeah, you put out a thing and say, this certain date early in the fiscal year for the next annual calendar, yeah. Kind of have a process, seems like the most fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rest of the council feel the same?
I do.
Yes. Okay. Would staff wish to respond?
Yeah, we can respond to it.
Thank you, Josette.
I just think it's kind of a short notice. It's a great idea.
Yeah.
But we're not prepared for it.
Okay, moving on. Staff report requests for prioritized BLCD, housing grants criteria.
So as my staff report says, we received this list. It's very similar. You'll kind of recognize a lot of the items from their PowerPoint presentation when they came with the planning firm that was helping them, from Columbia Economic Team. So you guys had the full list attached here, and staff gave you some recommended ones. Go either way, tell us what your topics are.
Priorities, three out of five, four or five? Recommendations?
I still, sorry.
Go ahead.
I still find this a little tone deaf. I mean, it still is really targeted towards big cities and urban areas and larger jurisdictions that have, that some of these really, really.
Bless you.
Target, yes, it's a thing. It's allergies. I mean, honestly, I'd rather look at the more locally based and more targeted to a community yard size that are off of the bigger list, rather than, first of all, things we're already doing.
Yeah.
And.
Or done.
Or done, yes.
So which ones would you like?
What money do I get?
Well, don't get any money, but I have to have this too, or what date did she say? The 21st.
When did she give this to you? Oh, on the 2nd.
Yes.
That's true.
July 2nd.
Yeah, so we would have had it.
You would have had it potentially as an add, addition on the 3rd if you.
I think a lot of these are things that we talked about, and we've talked about, and Planning Commission has talked about. I'd really love to know what they have as their priorities, because I know what I, my bias, working for Community Action Team and trying to find affordable housing and housing for people.
Right.
I have a potentially very different view than other counselors here. But I don't think that those are in opposition to what would be in the interest of the city either, in my opinion.
There's two that I, I would go forward on, and that's the one we just did, the UGB exchange. And then Strategy 43, target infrastructure improvements. I'm talking about that. Want to know more about it?
Sorry, I missed which one you said?
It's actually the first and third.
First and third?
Yeah.
And I do feel like we have talked about calibrating the SDCs as kind of something we should have on our radar as well.
Yeah. But what are we looking at, raising them, not lowering them?
Yeah.
That's in opposition to what their intent is here, so.
It is, but to me, calibration can be up or down.
Yeah, it doesn't say lower, decrease.
But when they're talking about prioritizing housing strategies to increase affordable housing, the intent would be, or the correlation would be, you want to increase affordable housing, so lower your SDCs, to make it more affordable. Honestly, I, for me, I think Strategy E2, which is allowing residential occupancy in RVs and tiny homes with wheels, with specific additional language, it says on the homeowner's private property, not just how you can pull it into the street and park it there.
We just went through years of discussing and prohibiting people living in RVs. You're wanting to.
I know. I, I understand that, but we still have a lot of people doing it anyway, in opposition to the ordinances that we have here in the city. I'm not saying that makes it right.
So my concern about a lot of their strategies is, yes, it increases affordable housing or housing needs in the state, but in a community like ours, it really lowers the quality of the living. And I think while some of us might need respite time of people living in an RV on our property, and you can get in, inhabiting a travel trailer permit, I think if every house had an RV, and how is that, how is that getting sewer, you know, all of that kind of logistical stuff comes into my brain and kind of stresses me out, Susan, honestly.
And I'm okay, I, I accept that.
Okay.
I'm with that. The property tax abatement for key housing needs is an interesting dynamic, because that isn't lowering SDCs, that is simply property tax. I'm sorry.
No, I was just making sure.
Saying number two, second in line is Sharice.
Go ahead, Susan.
So.
Which strategy is that?
I mean, that's something that, yes, I, I think there's a trade off of property tax deal versus how much money residents would bring into the community. We see you, Sharice, I jumped in front of you, you're next. And I know that we've readdressed the parking regulations, or we.
The state.
Planning did many years ago.
And the state removed the requirement, yeah.
So I think that's actually kind of a safe one. That is Strategy 1.5.
Yeah.
Okay, Sharice.
Yep. Go ahead, I'll let somebody else go.
So just two things I was going to throw out in case this feels like too big of a chunk for this evening, is, one, I would say we could, an idea would be to do what we've done with the, with ranking other stuff in the past, where we each rank priorities in our own order, and then staff merges that. I don't know if that's something people would be interested in doing. Or also, I was looking at the thing, it says draft by the 21st, but final by the 28th. So I don't know if that would give us more time as well. It wouldn't give us another minute.
I think, I think it's the 21st, but her, their, yeah, I, I'd have to double check that she's talking about our council, but it still doesn't help us because we don't have another meeting till the 7th.
Right.
Right.
So maybe you guys rank them and turn them in by the end of the week or something too. That could be an option. And we, we could just.
Do we talk?
Yeah. If you, if you don't feel ready to delve into this tonight.
Just, just a timing, we are meeting on Monday, correct?
Yeah, but for some different purpose.
But we could post that we're, that we, we take 15 or 30 minutes prior. But we could post that we're, that we, we take 15 or 30 minutes prior to, to just make sure that we're comfortable with the, the count, the way we. That, or we just do what Charisse.
You can do.
Council Ash has suggested.
That's how we've done it, asked if you guys don't already agree on something, then you guys rank them, one through whatever, 30, and then the winners are the winners because then it reduces the amount of back and forth trying to convince each other to see your way. That's how I feel.
Yeah.
I didn't anticipate.
I anticipated them coming with their own picked out.
I thought it would, yeah, it'd just be.
Okay.
So.
Sorry, we thought you guys would, if you didn't like our list, would have come up with, marked your own list. So we weren't thinking this was even going to be like troublesome to you, but.
I apologize then. I did not really in depth realize that this was your recommendation based on staff's opinion of this, so. Sorry.
Oh, I'm confused.
The line right at the top says, staff would recommend we send them in the following strategies as our list.
Yeah.
But if council determines these strategies align with the vision, if so, you could direct staff, if not.
Yeah. I, I read that when you first, when I first read the, the.
Packet and then.
Last week, and then the problem is that I do.
Too many packets, so I got it.
I do still feel that it's.
Yeah, so do you guys just want to send us your. Prioritize, how many are there?
No, I like this.
Top five?
Oh, I was gonna say.
Send your top five?
That's what Paul's requesting, right?
Yeah, five, five of some part of the strategies.
Right.
Well, but if we go that route, we should rank all of them because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? How, how low it is on someone's list could affect the standard. But if, if we're in agreement tonight, we can just proceed. I was just throwing out there as an option.
There's 20 items, so you'd be ranking your 1 through 20 and then just turning it into the city.
And go ahead.
Well, and one of my concerns is some of these things we already have adopted as a city, you know, the manufacturing homes, you know. We already are allowing to state standards, the ADUs, we're already doing ADUs. Parking regulations, state mandated that to us, so what more are we going to do there? We're already used doing the.
Well, so the parking regulations is even for single family homes.
Oh.
Not just the AD. Yeah. They want us to only allow or require one parking spot for a single family residence.
And I think that's.
Or out. We know everybody's got two plus cars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we don't have alternative transportation.
Right, right.
May I make a change of my mind? Based on actually rereading staff's report recommendation and looking at them, even though one of them we've actually done. And number, your second on the list could be taken up or down. I would, I think we should just go with your recommendations.
Well, and I'm not opposed if you want to add the, I mean, I'm not opposed to anything you guys want to do, but I like the idea of that tax one. Because if someone was coming in here with a big structure, low income apartments, which we know is kind of dire need, them getting a tax abatement isn't a huge skin off the citizen's back for providing something and bringing something forward. I get it when you want, feels like everyone, everyone same. I get it, I see it in your eyes, but that's how you motivate big developers to put in things that nobody's put in and since Community Action Team put the blue hair in apartments in, what, 90s?
96s.
Yeah, so almost 30 years ago, that's the last time we had any of that kind of smaller rental housing brought in. I don't know that they got any tax relief from it, but I think that's what's going to have to motivate someone to come out here. But the mobilization issue is to build something like that, all the things remote, you're going, they're going to have to be incentivized somehow, so that one doesn't bug me either.
So would you like a list of our priorities? It to you.
You guys feel like you want to rank them 1 to 20 and we just come up with what's the top?
Okay.
And if you really hate something, make it 20.
I mean, I'm on board, I'm on board with Susan to approve it as proposed by staff, if other people are, but if not, I'm happy to do the ranking.
So just let staff respond to.
Either one, you guys either tell me what we proposed to you on page 83 is what you'd like, or.
You're gonna turn me in, you're, you're gonna list by Friday.
Either way, I'm good.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
No, Mr.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I am very happy with what we have here.
Based on your comment about the tax.
Sure.
I really do like that one as well. I would like to make a motion that we recommend staff respond with the four proposed on their report and add Strategy 2.2 offer property tax abatement for key housing needs.
I would second that.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Counselor Ash?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Counselor Norman?
Hi.
Counselor Wagner?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hey.
Motion carried.
All due respect. Counselor Webb, is there any such reason that you dissented in this vote?
I, I just think the addition of the tax abatement, it, it needs further thought than.
Okay.
That's, that was my reasoning. Other than that, the rest of the list is fine by me. There you go, Mr. Lurd.
Sorry, I took you all down that road.
No problem. First day I've had in a long time.
You're exercising your neck.
Any business from the departments tonight? Ordances and resolutions? Nope. Correspondence? I do have one. Counselor Wagner and Counselor Ash and myself attended the citywide county dinner over in St. Helens last week, and it was a good turnout. Betsy Johnson was there and Speaker Jim McCully from League of Cities spoke. First time I met Jim and, and he had a lot of good information about Oregon Legislature, so it was a good meeting and good food, and so Veronese was well represented, I think. That's the only correspondence I have any, any Counselor Ash or Wagner, have anything to add to that dinner?
They gave us a great idea for giveaways for when we do it. They put, they put City of St. Helens cups and mugs, and they're the nice tall angled ones.
Oh, yeah.
Not that one, the actual, the centerpieces, but they did that too. The centerpieces, and then they gave those away as raffles as well.
Oh.
They were really nice, just very simple, couple of sunflowers, some, some berries and a little greenery, and they were lovely all the way around the table, and that's what they gave us. One of the things they gave us, the voice.
Nice.
And a really nice basket put together by Mayor Shoal. Most of it, they're Halloween decorations and stuff. Nice hat, St. Helens hat, and I want it, so. So it was fun. Okay.
Also, I would say Senator Suzanne Weber was there as well, our current senator.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yep. City Administrator Report.
Okay, so I feel like I read these to you guys. Anybody have any questions on what I, does the, I don't know. So the decommissioning of the old dump, I sent a follow up email at the time of the packet, and he responded and he's like, oh my gosh, thank you. We totally, it fell off our radar, we're, we're, so he was like, thank goodness you're still bugging us. So they're going to work to get that scheduled this month sometime. Hopefully by the end of July, they'll go up and we'll network with Mary Ann and test that well to see if it's got the leaching, then it can qualify for the orphan site. If it only has existing natural minerals, then it probably won't. And so then we'll have to navigate what happens after that. So this report is a few days old. So the equipment was delivered on site for the grandstand demo on the 13th, and Waste Management did have the additional three dumpsters, and then they brought us two more additional ones that are empty there now, so we just have one more afternoon floating. And then the grandstands will be down. We had nine citizens fill out waivers and come and salvage timbers and lumber and weird things they found that, you know, resonated with them, which was great. And basically, when those back walls fell down, there was one guy that wanted the two by sixes and one guy that wanted the plywood, and they just undid the whole wall. So Casey was like, yes, we don't have to load that. So it worked out good. We did also have a citizen that wanted the concrete that was kind of runners down the center of the grandstands and then the four corner sets of concrete. And he was willing to take the kind of mingled metal scrap because it was a nightmare, and we were glad someone was willing to take it. So we hope that that's going to be wrapped up by Thursday, and then we're going to check for metal in the dirt and then put in inch and a half because that's what's readily available to us at a cheaper price, not having to truck it in. There is still rumors that Oak Ranch, I don't know if they've started, but they were going, planning on starting to crush again up there, and then potentially three quarter inch minus would be more reasonable for us. But people can park on inch and a half, and that's our goal is to have it bollards along the front of it to keep people from just driving onto the track. They'll have that same entrance and exit that they've had alongside of where the grandstands was, and then compacted rock until we can dress it, and then until Parks Committee or the citizens or the town come up with another thing to be put there, whether it's a pavilion or pickleball court, there's been lots of ideas floated around. And this sunburn is courtesy of all the waivers. I had to stand out there waiting for people for six hours over the weekend. Do you want to salvage? Please sign my waiver. I applied for the ODFW Restoration Enhancement Grant that was submitted on the 10th of July for the new dock platforms, and that would include the framing, the decking being the Eco Grade, which is what fisheries really want because it's not pressure treated, it's not leaching anything into the water, and then the walk on dock that we had talked about doing by the boat launch. So that he's reviewing it this week. He did ask me one question on Friday, whether or not the Eco Grade is ADA compliant, and what we're proposing absolutely is. The SCA ODOT grant got turned in on Wednesday, the 12th, and that's for the 12 project areas. That includes the chip ceiling of the tree streets, almost all of them. And then the stuff up in Upper D, not including E because we know that water or that sewer water is, infrastructure is going to go there and we don't want to be tearing it up. And so we typically don't hear back about either of those till fall, winter, because they usually have their commission meeting in September and like, or a committee meeting in September and a commission meeting that finalizes who they picked in December. Related to the RNE grant, should we not get picked, although we will, you can reapply January of '24, so we'll have that ready. Still have not received any information on the repair. I did send another of the guardrail up at the top by the museum. I did send another kind of push email to see, hey, are we on the schedule yet to get those replaced? The electrical projects, I, since this, I've added a, added a few, and I'm, our electrician had COVID in the end of June, and then he lost a worker to another company, so he's scrambling, but we are in communication and we are working to get some of these things busted out. Storm Ready City, no change. I did talk to Michael Calhoun, he was one of my salvage people, and he was going to push on his side too to see, hey, where's the sign so we can do a dedication before we're in the middle of storm season? So hopefully one of us gets some movement. And then I just listed your upcoming closures and meetings. Do you guys have any questions for me?
If not, thank you, Josette. Items from the mayor and counselor. I have one. I contacted Roger Smith, he's the chair for the Jamboree Committee, and I asked him almost about two weeks ago if there were any nominations for Citizen of the Year, and believe it or not, he only had one, and it was Claude LaRiche. And he informed me that Claude did not want the recognition and so forth, and you know how Claude is. So I said, well, okay, I'll have a little chat with Claude, so. I, to make a long story short, I, I, he agreed to be the Citizen of the Year 2023, and I'm going to have a mayor's float and, and pull him through the parade on his electric scooter on a trailer mine and, and recognize Claude, so that's a good story for you, Scott. And, you know, I, when I think of Claude, and we've recognized him, I think, as Citizen of the Month almost twice now. At least one time, I wrote an article last year about him in the paper. He just epitomizes what volunteerism is, and he doesn't want any recognition, no rewards, no money. And he's out there seven days a week if you let him. Paints, sleep, shine, whatever, but. What an example for our, our young people, and so I'm really happy about it, and it's an honor for me to take him through the parade, so that'll be happening, Jamboree.
Hey, Rick, I've thought about adding a new feature in the, in the Voice speech issue of where, where's Claude? Catch a picture of him doing his cleanup work, and it's that I just need to remember, you need to be able to find a place to pull over and stop, and I'd see him and grab a picture of him.
Yeah.
I might start doing that.
I mean.
Where's Claude this time?
Lately, he's cleared behind the library, the storage shed, and in fact, he found a, a person sleeping there one night. But anyway, he, he's an amazing individual for over 80 years old. It's, it's just amazing to me, so. Anybody else? Susan?
Probably should have been under unfinished business. Do we have any information about the training that we were gonna?
No. Yvonne, for catching up, I'm sorry. That had one potential, not going to pan out, so I'm going to reach out to my constituents and see if there's other trainings. The one that I found was an online. The one that I found was an online training. It's kind of impersonal. That doesn't, it's really hard to do. I think ideally someone will come here. So I am working on it. There was still a kickstart, so. Haven't forgot you.
I appreciate that. Just wanted to double check.
Yes.
Counselor Ash, do you have anything further tonight?
I'll just let you know that I will not be able to make our special meeting next Monday since the fourth Monday. But I will have my paperwork in a hot item.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Dale.
Go ahead, Dale.
All right, well. Hitting on Claude seeing the homeless person over here sleeping twice in there. And we had guests from out of town, from Claude's cousins and from Vermont and out of California. Well, the one guy wanted to fall, he wanted to do everything I was doing, so we went down to the lake pump. Lo and behold, one of our local was watching these clothes in the river down there that day, so. Yeah, they do what you got to do. So earlier tonight, we had somebody mention about the fireworks. And I think there's a state statute on that. If I follow my cousin's Facebook post, he said it's pretty much already laid out state statute on the fireworks restrictions. But it's a challenging thing for the city. I mean, one, we don't have the police force. I mean, I would love to be able to invite everybody to come down to one area and do their fireworks. But as a city, the liability of that would just, it's outside of what we would want to accept or shooter would accept. So, you know, it's just a catch-22 for us. I mean, I don't know, that's why I'm curious about the state statutes on this because I know people do shoot some fireworks around the New Year's time. You know, if it was, okay, we got high fire danger, reserve your fireworks for first of the year. And the citizens understand that we're going to have more fireworks on the first year. That's the trade-off, if we could promote something like that. The fireworks thing is getting very political. It was, I was a little dismayed, and I'll go out on this limb because I was sitting there. The criteria for a red flag warning, community more than three hours below 15%, high elevated temperatures, and wind gusts in excess of 25 miles an hour. There was no forecast for high winds that day. There was no high winds in our area for that day.
Okay.
And I don't think even, I looked at Salem because Salem pulled the rug from their fireworks off of that red flag warning. And I don't think they met criteria either. So why I say this is getting political, I think, yeah, it wasn't a great day to be having fireworks. I don't think it met the criteria to pull the red flag, but I think there was pressure on the meteorologists to do so. That's just my opinion. Because I was like, where is this coming from? There was no forecast, there was no forecast on that day.
Right.
That they were putting out that showed those kind of winds. So anyhow, that's just.
I was not in town. Was it way different than the years past as far as illegals go? Because usually you have your two sides of town warring families that you know where they're going off. And it's just, can you catch them before it's gone out? Was there a ton more than normal?
We had a pile like right outside the campground.
But I mean, illegal, like because you can still do fountains, you can still do things that go up to eight feet in the air. I mean, Oregon sells plenty of legal fountain fireworks and different.
Last of the year, it's what?
More than normal? Because usually both.
Until midnight.
Oh. Okay.
And on our end also.
Okay.
They were pretty lovely, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't think it was more than normal. We always have a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that was my impression.
I'm usually up with the animals and I didn't, it wasn't like, whoa.
Yeah, still going, yeah.
Just kind of what I expected.
One set off, set off some alarms.
Well.
Yeah.
I was standing out in my horse pasture with my two horses on either side of me. And I had quite a show right, right close.
Dean only set off one garbage bag on Saturday this year. So disappointing.
People in the park kept asking about fireworks. I'm sorry, we just, we can't allow them to park this year. But I mean, I went through and checked out the fireworks danger and just kind of just stayed up a little bit later just in case something did catch, just.
Yeah.
Relatively just be preventative. But people don't like fireworks before the July.
Right.
But I guess it's kind of being there ready just in case.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, my fear, they get political throwing red flag warnings out when we really have one and we really do not need any fireworks.
Right, I think.
Are going to, am I? That's why I was a little peeved at that. Yeah, I don't know. I don't, there's no simple solution, that's for sure.
I'll look at what the state statute.
It's called, it calls out the criteria and the like.
Yeah. Well, and usually, so Fire Department didn't shut, shut it down? Because usually that's where it comes from, the state fire marshal, then the fire departments. I know that in Banks, when you drove through, it said no fireworks or something like, like they had closed down their area, that Forest Grove branch of the fire departments.
And I'm trying, they put something out.
They did.
Was it a fireworks restriction or was it just a red flag?
Red flag and no burning, no, no barbecues.
Banks still has their show.
Yeah, but I think they were limiting the, in the neighborhood stuff or something. There was like a sign when we drove through.
And the odd thing is they don't enforce the law.
Right.
It's our police officers that did, so.
Right.
Well, I certainly understood our citizens' concern tonight. And you know, what she said about our lack of law enforcement is very true in our city right now. We're only down to two officers. Like Dale said, it's a catch-22. It's very difficult.
Yeah.
And I wasn't expecting the big display. I just was wanting, it started and I wanted to make sure my horses were okay and weren't going to break through the fence, so, but then I had quite a, quite a display. And then there was this one big boom. I mean, it, and I made the mistake of looking up at it and it actually gave me spots. I walked in the house and I had black spots in my eyes. It was that intense. But anyway.
I'll look into that statute for you guys and bring back what I find out.
It's unfortunate this year, and it wasn't that the community didn't have the funding for it. It was just the shooter, and that's what they're called. They're called shooters. And it's an extensive training and certification process to become a shooter. And so the one that's been shooting them off the last several years just couldn't do it this year. It was just as simple as that. He had another conflict, so.
Well, so I found something out about that. Once the materials are delivered on site, he cannot leave. So he is stuck down there the entire day till dark.
Okay.
Because he can't leave the materials by themselves. So that's one option is that we look into, as a community, hiring a firm. Because if they come out and they have a locked truck with their supplies, they don't have to do what our one-man show was doing. So that, but it is more expensive to have them be the initiators. But we could look into that too, so.
Okay. Anything else, Dale? Sheree, have anything to add?
She's asleep.
Mad till midnight, fine.
How you doing, Rick?
Okay.
Okay, I got a notice of a police officer being fired from Columbia County Jail. It's in public records.
Could you say that again?
Shawn Carnahan has been fired from the Columbia County Jail, has worked in there, and it's under review.
Haven't heard anything about it.
Isn't this a personnel issue that really should not be brought up in public? Even though it may be in public record, it is discussing a member of, who is a, an employee of the city and should not be brought up in public meeting.
Okay. Action item summary.
Okay, so I'm going to work with the picture I have and do a border around it to send the image of what the sign might look like on the shelter, the picnic shelter for the Parks meeting. I'm going to send a pass RFP for Parks Grant Architectural Action to Spence on the Parks Committee. Respond to Katrina Nelson with the upcoming donation policy kind of discussion. Tell her unfortunately, we can't participate this year, but council's willing to look into a donation policy and earmark funds potentially for doing that throughout the year, participating in different community events. And I'm going to look into the Fire State Statute Regarding Fireworks and the process for restrictions and which agencies, then how that comes down to the citizens through which agencies for such restrictions. Did I miss anything?
Okay. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. And I'll adjourn this, I'll adjourn this meeting at 8:45 PM. Meeting adjourned.